Looks like we're live.
We are now live. You may start the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so we're ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 10, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Sirda.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
All members of the council are present.
Okay. Tonight, we didn't have closed session, so before we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, let me just read this little quick disclaimer. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has signed AB 361. Please be advised that the council chambers are closed to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may be attending this meeting telephonically or by Zoom. If you would like to participate in the meeting, you can participate via the following options. The first way is to view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate is prior to the meeting, you can email the deputy city clerk at publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting and write public comments in the subject line. The third way to participate is via the Zoom webinar. And the link is https://us02wb.coom.us/j/85073396103. The telephone number is area code 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID number is 850-733-96103. Press the number nine to raise your hand and the number six to unmute when prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the Raise Your Hand feature during which item you wish to speak on. For non-agenda items, you will be allowed to speak during oral communications. And during the public hearing, you'll be allowed to speak when I open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given three minutes to speak. The City of Gardena thanks in advance for helping us to take all the precautions and helping to prevent the spreading of the COVID-19 virus. So, now that we've gotten that out of the way, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have two students from 153rd Street Elementary School, Yuna Abad and Valerie Pedrosa. If you guys are ready, you can go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then stay on until after the invocation, and we're just going to bring you back for a second. Okay? So you guys can go ahead and begin now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. You guys can just stay on for a few minutes here. Next, we're going to move on to our invocation. Mayor Protem, will you lead us in that, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bless your prayer. Father, we come to you tonight. We're just so thankful for all that you have blessed us with, all the things that you just provide us with to keep us calm, to keep us patient, to keep us understanding. Father, we pray for our world. We pray for just all the turmoil that's happening in our world, that Father, you would be the one that would put your hand on us to resolve some of the issues that are going on right now. Father, we pray for our country. We pray for our leaders. And most of all, Father, we pray for us as a council, as a council that takes care of our community, our city, and the needs of our people. So, Father, as we move on tonight, that everything that flows from us in our hearts flow from you. So, Father, we thank you so much for all you do for us and for your son and his sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, let's go back to our pledges for a second here. Tonight, we were led in the Pledge of Allegiance by two students from 153rd Street Elementary School, Yuna Abad and Valerie Pedrosa. Yuna was chosen because she attends class every day. She completes her work on time and is always willing to try her best. Valerie was chosen because she has great leadership skills and is responsible, creative, resilient, and always willing to help. So, we'd just like to give you a round of applause. Everybody just give them a virtual round of applause. You guys did a great job leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we look forward to you guys coming back in the future and continue doing great in school. So, thank you guys very much. Okay. All right. And as always, Mayor Protem, thank you very much for leading us in tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so next, we're going to move on to presentations. The first one is the 53rd Municipal City Clerk's Week. I'm going to first turn it over to our city clerk, Ms. Mina Simmons, if you'd like to say a few words first.
Thank you, Mayor Sirda. I just want to say that we wanted to share with you how the City Clerk's Office celebrated City Clerk's Week, and you'll see that our staff got very creative. And we visited every single department. We went to everybody because, you know, from pandemic, we kind of decided, you know, we couldn't have a celebration, and so we did have one this year. We kind of did it differently. And they wanted to share it with you tonight. So, thank you so much for allowing us to do that.
Okay, I think we have a video here. Okay, very nice.
Thank you. And I don't know if you noticed, but Catherine recreated these really cute emojis that she put on all the cookies. They're so cute. I have to show you guys. Let's see. Anyway, thank you so much for letting us share that with you.
Wow, absolutely. That was very creative. Who would have thought? Just take a rolling cart around like that.
Oh, yeah. It was interesting. We even lifted it up into the detective trailer.
Wow.
It was fun. I had a good time with the ladies and everybody else, so we all had a good time. We even got a driving lesson at the bus depot, a transportation facility. Anyway, thank you again.
Okay, well, thank you. I tell you, COVID has definitely taught us to be very creative here, and you guys definitely were up to the challenge on that one there. So, nice. Okay, so, next proclamation we have is for the Asian American, and I'm sorry, I skipped here. Item number 5B is the introduction of the VIP Dance and Nutrition, a recognition of the National Small Business Week, and our new Economic Development Director, Jackie, is going to come on, and she's going to introduce our business owner tonight.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the city council. To celebrate last week's National Small Business Week, staff would like to highlight and introduce a small business of our own in our city of Gardena. The name is VIP Dance and Nutrition. Located at 2522 Rosegarden Avenue, VIP Dance and Nutrition is a family-owned dance studio that started about three years ago in Hawthorne, and they recently relocated to Gardena. The business offered daily morning and afternoon Zumba classes and dance lessons with their dance team named the New Mambo. When the business was looking for a bigger studio space, they found their current location in the Star Plaza. They knew it would be a perfect location for them to grow their businesses. The studio in Gardena has opened many opportunities for them, which they did not think that they could actually achieve. Every day, the business opens its door to many amazing people with amazing stories and experiences. On behalf of our business, Vanessa Alia, the CEO of VIP Dance and Nutrition, thanked the city of Gardena for the amazing opportunities and then the invitations to all incredible events. And Vanessa's actually here today streaming on the meeting live, so at this time, if we may, staff would like to give the opportunity for Vanessa to say a few words.
Hello, I'm actually Vanessa's daughter, Dara Gonzalez. My mom actually had a class right now at VIP, but I just want to thank everyone, you know, Madam Mayor, the council team. Thank you, and Ms. Jackie Choi for this amazing opportunity, and we can't wait to be a part of more Gardena events. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. That's a cool thing to be, to be recognized as one of our small businesses here. Small businesses are seriously what keeps cities like ours moving forward. So, we thank you for choosing Gardena to have your business here, and we hope that you continue to grow and grow and have a second dance studio in our city and many more. So, thank you again. All right, give them a round of applause one more time, please. Right, thank you. Thank you, Jackie, for sharing that with us as well. Okay, next, we have a couple of proclamations. The first one is for the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here, which is May of 2022. Americans who trace their ancestry to Asia and the Pacific Islands have contributed much to our city, our state, and our nation. According to the 2019 U.S. Census data, the Asian American and Pacific Islanders communities comprise over 25% of the city of Gardena's population. To honor and celebrate their achievements and contributions that generations of Asian American Pacific Islanders have made to American history, society, and culture, Congress, by public law 102-45, permanently designated the month of May each year as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This year's theme, I'm sorry, this year's theme by the Federal Asian Pacific American Council, who represent Asian American and Pacific Islanders employees in the federal and district of Columbia Government, is advancing leaders through collaboration. This theme is the start of the new theme series for 2021 through 2024, highlighting the efforts in advancing leaders. Their values and commitments to family and community have helped shape and strengthen America. These citizens speak many languages, honor countless traditions, and practice different faiths, but they are bound by a shared commitment to freedom and liberty. So, at this time, we proclaim May 2022 to be Asian American Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. In the city of Gardena, and call upon all residents to recognize the significance, the significant culture, economic leadership, and empowerment, impact of the citizens of Asian American and Pacific Islanders heritage on this nation and state, and the vital role they have played in shaping the cultural diversity of this community. And we have another proclamation, and that is for Public Works Week. Give me a second. My computer's moving a little slow. Okay, this proclamation here, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people of Gardena, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, and who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is, it is in the public's interest for Gardena citizens and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works and Canadian Public Works Association. Let's see, we proclaim May 15 through May 21, 2022, to be National Public Works Week. In the city of Gardena, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to join in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life, which so appropriately reflects 2022 theme, Public Works Ready and Resilient. And our last proclamation here is Provider Appreciation Day, which is May 6. National Providers Appreciation Days observe every Friday before Mother's Day, and this year it falls on May 6. On this day, we celebrate all family childcare providers. Provide Appreciation Day was established in 1995 by Sue Williamson, the past president of the National Association of Family Childcare, and the special day has been celebrated each year after since established. The city of Gardena is pleased to have 23 providers that are part of the Gardena Family Childcare Program. These 23 providers currently serve 175 children, representing 130 families. They are licensed by the state and provide childcare service in their homes. On this day, we celebrate and honor all the work that childcare providers do every day for parents and families across the country. The COVID-19 crisis has heightened even more the importance of childcare for children, working parents, and employers. These 23 Gardena providers completely transform their programs to follow the county's health guidelines and diligently work to keep their childcare environment clean and safe. We must acknowledge the essential workforce family childcare providers represent and honor their continued commitment to their work. So, we proclaim May 6, 2022, to be Providers Appreciation Day in the city of Gardena, and call upon all residents to recognize family childcare providers for their significant and important work provided to many families. Okay, with that being said, we don't have any appointments tonight. We're going to move on to our consent calendar. I'm sure everybody's had the opportunity to look over the consent calendar. Does any member of the council wish to discuss any items separately here?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Which item?
Item 8C.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public that has any questions in regards to the consent items?
A nu, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number 8C?
Ooh.
Okay. Okay, Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Mayor Protem Tanaka. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Mayor Sirda.
Yes. Okay, let's go to item number nine, excluded consent calendar items, which is item number 8C. 8C, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Okay, I just had a couple of questions. Again, I noticed the business license, another by business license fee refund, and I'm just wondering, I thought last month's report was an inclusion of all the refunds that had been done, and I was kind of curious about what happened. Also, I noticed there were about 10, 11 refunds for citation repayments. And also, there was a permit refund of 3,000 and 2,000. I was just wondering, what was, perhaps it happens all the time, but this is the first time I've noticed this since I've been on city council, and I'm just wondering, is it a glitch in the system, or I'm sure the recipients of the refunds were quite pleased to have them back, have the money back, but I guess I'm just kind of, again, what I'm wondering, is there a problem with the system? Do we need to take a look at it, or is it all in-house errors, or what's going on?
Okay. Mr. City Manager, would you like to go ahead and address that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Francis, yeah. As to the refunds for business licenses, I mean, we try to do everything all at once. These are just, you know, there's a certain cutoff time and date, and these are just leftovers from the previous run that we had. So, it's not something that is erroneous. This is something that's system-generated that we, we just try to do it all, try to do it as fast as we can, but sometimes it just goes over in the next run.
Okay.
Yeah, and some of them, you know, they move out of the city. Sometimes they move out of the city, and so they get a refund because they have to reapply to a different city that they're going to be operating under. So, I believe there's some, some of these are going to be the ones that are, they're moving out of the city.
But we are, we do have a system of tracking, definitely have a system of tracking, because I guess because they're reporting, we know what's happening with them. And the other question I had is the CalCard statement. Is that, I'm not quite sure how that works. And the only reason that, it is like a credit card. Is that correct? It is a credit card, or no?
It is a credit card, yes.
Okay, and I guess the reason I'm noticing is because every month, it's like 20,000, and I think in, for, I mean, not every month, but each report, one time it's 31,000, it's back down to 23,000. And so, I'm wondering, is it just a way of, I'm not trying to track works, and how do departments, do departments pay, pay their share of the purchases, or they reimburse the city, or how's that work?
So, let me, let me just go over, I'm assuming you're referring to the US Bank Payments. This is the CalCard Statements, page 17.
Yeah, I don't have, that's what I'm talking about.
Right? I mean, it's, okay, so, these are, these are CalCard credit cards that are authorized by the city. They could be, as you can see, these can be department heads. Sometimes they're using city council credit card, city manager credit card. So, for this particular voucher list, you know, we have a number of different functions here that we've had, recreation, some PD, some admin services. So, these are just, you know, charges that we've had the previous month that the city pays for, and it's reconciled back to the system. I mean, without really knowing which one you're referring to, I don't know where the $30,000 is coming from, but...
It was just the one at the, that was, that was back April 7. That was 31. You know, I just kind of noticed that it's all hovering like around 20,000, and I think to myself, boy, over a year's time, that can be, that can become quite a chunk of money. And does the department, I mean, does this, the payment comes out of the department's budget, or?
So, every single line item here that you see on the CalCard Statement has a corresponding line item budget that you, the city council, have already pre-approved in the beginning of the budget cycle. So, for instance, I'm just going to use admin services for, as an example. Let's say they go on a travel and training. The amount is, I'm going to use the arbitrary $10,000. So, let's say that a number of employees went on a trip, and, you know, they went on a conference, and the total amount is $10,000. That $10,000 that you see there, you as a city council have already seen that in the budget cycle. So, on admin services budget, you'll see a line item budget for travel and training, $10,000. And you'll see that in the upcoming budget cycle. You'll see that when we go through, you know, departmental budget, you'll see that X dollars is allocated for travel and training. So, none of these things here that you see in the CalCard Statements is out of the ordinary. These are all budgeted, that you, the city council, has approved during the budget cycle, and we're just expending it now.
Okay, well, as you say, since we approved it, I just want to make sure that we're, there are appropriate expenditures, and...
Of course, yeah.
You know, you get my meaning.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Thank you. And I'm just trying to, is there, since, well, I guess since it's part of the budget, there's like a ceiling, or, you know, you can take, you can spend up this much?
It's whatever is reasonable, for instance. So, you know, I'm just using an arbitrary number, you know, travel and training, for instance, let's say $10,000. Let's say the city council, for instance, goes to a conference, you spend $2,000 for one council member. That's already been pre-approved the prior year. So, come July 1, the city has to have an approved budget by the city council. We can't spend anything without approval of the city council. So, you know, one of the main functions of the city council is to approve a budget for the entire year. And we do that using different methods, line item budgeting, et cetera, et cetera. And if you pull out the budget book, you'll see that, for instance, the city council travel and training would have a budget of, say, an arbitrary number of 2,000 or 5,000. So, when you see that budget amount, you see that charge in the CalCard, that has to foot, that has to be, that has to coincide with the budget. The reason why we know that it's appropriate is because we have an annual audit that our external third-party auditors go through every single year, and, you know, qualifies us for the award that we get every single year, and we don't have any findings. That's the reason why I can reasonably tell you that we are very confident that all of these charges have been audited, they've been vetted, and it's legitimate charges.
All right, thank you very much. It's just we're doing so well. I just want to make sure that we do all we can to keep on doing so well.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate your explanation.
Okay.
Are there any more questions?
No, that was it.
Oh, no, I meant anybody, overall. Okay, that being said, can I get a motion, excuse me, to approve item number 8C?
Some of, I'll prove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Councilmember Cascanian. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Sirda.
Yes. Okay, the May, I'm sorry, the Planning and Environmental Quality Commission Action Sheet, just for a quick note of reference, the May 3, 2022 meeting was canceled. The next up, we have oral communications. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
Um, yes, we have a hand up.
Okay.
Tracy Sadawatari.
Okay. Let's go ahead and...
Yes, hi, Mayor Sirda and council. It's me again, Tracy Sadawatari, community organizer with ADAP and Chair of an adult coalition here in Gardena, G-DAP, Gardena Drug and Alcohol Abuse Prevention Task Force. I'm here to just extend my gratitude for the prescription drug takeback, for the partnering with Gardena Police Department, and for Chief Sefel for taking the charge and making sure that we have it happen, even though we had the mariachi and maracas festival at the same time. It was a successful event, and I just wanted to share that we were able to collect, let's see, about, hold on, I have my notes here, 163 pounds of prescription drugs, unused and expired medications, keeping them out of the environment, keeping them out of the hands of children. So, it was a great success. We also had LADEA onsite as well at the event, and we were able to, they were interviewed because they thought that the Gardena event was a great event to have partnered with a community event as well. And one of my colleagues said that Gardena was kind of like the central locale for the RX Takeback this year because of the community event. So, they did interview one of the head DEA agents, and I believe it was on the news. I didn't get to see it, but I just wanted to share that with all of you. The efforts are greatly appreciated by our agency and the community, and we look forward to partnering again with you, with the city, and with the PD and DEA. This prescription drug takeback takes place at the end of April, last week in April, and also in October. So, hopefully, we can continue the collaboration. Just note, for residents that don't know, there is a permanent drop-off box in front of the PD. If you can't make it to any of those events, you can drop off your unused or expired medications. If you can't make it to any of those events, uh, you can drop off your unused or expired medications there as well. And some of the pharmacies in the cities as well have the drop boxes. Um, Rite Aid, Walgreens, and CVS. But again, thank you very much and uh, that's all.
All right, thank you so much for sharing that with us. That's really great to hear that um, you uh, you had a very successful event there, so, thank you. Madam City Clerk, any other speakers at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not have any other speakers.
Okay, that being said, let's move on to our departmental items. First item up is item number eleven A, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item eleven A is amendment to contract between CalPERS Board of Administration and City of Gardena. Staff recommends city council dot resolution number sixty-five seventy-six, resolutions of intention to approve an amendment to the city's contract with the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, otherwise known as CalPERS, to allow cost sharing of the employer contribution pursuant to government code section two zero five one six for members of the Gardena Municipal Employees Association, or GMEA, Gardena Management Employees Association, or GMEA, and the Unrepresented Confidential Personal uh, Group, which is the uh, Unrepresented. This resolution initiates the process to amend the city's contract with CalPERS to allow members of the GMEA, GMEA, and Unrepresented to pay an additional one percent of compensation towards employer contribution rate. GMEA agreed to a cost-sharing agreement through the memorandum of understanding adopted by city, city council on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And GMEA agreed to a cost-sharing agreement through their MOU adopted by city, city, that city council on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And the Unrepresented Personal Group agreed to a cost-sharing arrangement through resolution number sixty-five, sixty-five, which was adopted by the city council on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. There are several steps to amend the city's contract with CalPERS and resolution number sixty-five sixty-five approves the resolution of intention, which is Attachment B, to approve the contract amendment. An Attachment B is in a form specified by CalPERS and cannot be altered. Staff recommends that the mayor executes Attachments A and B. An Attachment C is the proposed ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract between CalPERS and the city. And this is the first reading of the ordinance with a second and final reading scheduled for adoption on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. There is no financial impact. What is required tonight is to adopt resolution number sixty-five seventy-six and introduce ordinance number eighteen forty-two.
Madam Mayor, we could take um, once the motions are made, if we can take separate motions, please. Or.
For the, one for the resolution and then we'll do a roll call for that and then a separate one for the introduction of the ordinance.
Two roll calls, I got it. Okay, um, does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? No? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public who has any questions or comments?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, um, at this time, can I get a resolution, um, can I get a motion for a res- uh, to approve resolution number sixty-five seventy-six?
Go move.
I'm sorry, who said that first?
Mayor Protem.
Mark did.
Okay.
I think it's him.
I'm sorry, one more time, please.
Henderson and Mayor Protem.
Got it, thank you. Okay, Madam City Clerk, motion made by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Mayor um, Protem. They do that on purpose.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
And Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, um, at this time, can I get a motion uh, for us to even introduce the ordinance?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, there's a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Councilmember Cascanian. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
And Mayor Serta.
Yes, okay, who would like to introduce the ordinance?
I will.
I'm sorry, was that uh, Cascanian? Okay, all right, Madam City Clerk, um, ordinance number eighteen forty-two will be introduced by Councilmember Cascanian.
So noted, thank you.
Okay, all right, um, next up is item number thirteen A, our COVID nineteen update, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, um, for today's uh, COVID nineteen update, uh, even though we had a, a hundred ninety-six cases uh, of COVID in our city since the last time we reported, which is about two weeks ago, which is uh, we're really averaging about two hundred, two hundred cases, uh, positive cases uh, every two weeks. Happy to uh, uh, report that we did not have any uptick in our death count. It's remained at uh, two hundred and sixty-seven since the last time we reported. Uh, as far as our, our vaccination uh, rate is concerned, our children five through eleven is at thirty-two point six percent. Uh, those ages twelve and above is eighty-eight point five. Our youth at twelve uh, to seventeen years old is eighty-one point one percent. And our seniors uh, remains at ninety-five percent. These are folks that are sixty-five and, and over. Um, we continue to test uh, our citizens, our residents at Raleigh Park. Uh, we have the COVID nineteen test site there. And as of May tenth, twenty twenty-two, we have a total of uh, six thousand three hundred and eighty-eight residents tested. And we tested about eighty-nine uh, since the last uh, council meeting. Madam Mayor, so that's my COVID report.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? No? Okay, that being said, let's move on to directives. Does any member of the council have any directors at this time? Okay, Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this directive is, is not like a major one, but when I was at the SCAG conference and we talked about communities uh, performing their, their role in digital equity in the community. So in, in those conversations, there was a thing, well, have everybody log on to your website and different things like that. But if you don't have any connectivity, there's no website for you to log on to. So I actually, I entered into a communication with uh, Spectrum to see if they could give us some data in regards to connected households in our community. They can't give us that either. So if I could get a second, Mr. City Manager, could we get the cost of what it would, would be for us to mail out a one-page survey with return postage to the households in our community so we can get a true accurate amount of how many households are connected in our community? Just the cost of what that mailing survey would be? And then we can decide as a council if we want to spend that money to figure out what we uh, have going on in our city.
Hmm, that's a good one.
I'll give you a second on that, Mark.
Thank you, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson, can I just get a question? One-page sum- uh, summary survey of how many households have internet connection?
Yeah, well, but not the survey itself, I just want, we want to know what the cost is to mail.
The cost is percent, okay.
Yeah, because we still have to create a survey instrument and all that.
Yeah, that should be, that cost should be pretty easily uh, determined. It's just a one-page thing, we send all of our residents. We'll just have to figure out how much typically we spend on mailers, okay?
Right, but postage, return postage is gonna be the.
Oh, the returnment, great, okay.
Yeah. Because double.
Yeah. Do, do we know how many households it's gonna go to?
Uh, we'd have, we'd have to uh, figure that out first. Since we have a second, uh, we can, we can work on that right away.
Yeah, dollar ten cents each.
Yes. I'm sure Recreation has an idea on how many households we usually send mailers out to, but.
Right.
Um, we'd have to double-check that and make sure that we capture all of the households that we, we want to send to all of our residents. We, we should have that number.
Okay, thank you. Then we can decide as a body if we want to spend money on that.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, was there, there was a second on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, any other directors at this time?
Uh, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, the last, uh, last city council, well, I'm not quite sure which one it was, but I did ask about uh, our electronic signs at Raleigh Park and at Masukai. And I asked whether that they could be repaired or replaced and I don't recall getting a response on, on that. So I, I think, especially given since we're um, we're moving toward reopening, but I think it would be very useful um, way of communicating to our, our residents, our constituents, that what's going on with our city, our events that are happening. So is there any, anything we could uh, do about that?
I'm sorry, was that already?
You know, the electronic signs at Raleigh Park and Masukai, they've been down now for, well, almost two years, at least, at least a year, almost two years now. And I think um, they would have been very useful, particularly during this COVID time, to communicate, you know, what's going on, sees opening, um, you know, the events that are coming up. And they, they helped, they helped, you know, make, help residents know what's going on.
So what we, what we did, Councilmember Francis, is, is we um, actually slated that for replacement rather than repair because it's, it's just, the technology is a little bit older. Um, it's finicky and if we keep on repairing it, uh, it's obviously not under warranty anymore. Keep on repairing it, we're kind of putting, you know, putting, putting it aside and just keep on repairing it without, you know, getting an actual quality product. So what we did is we included that on our CIP um, replacement, CIP budget, which we're developing the budget now. So if I could uh, just uh, request a little bit more time, as staff is working on it. Um, it's not something that we can, because we have to actually vet it out and, and get some quotes and whatnot. So it's not something that we can provide it and answer. We can provide a rough estimate as far as what the cost is, but we are baking it into our CIP replacement program as far as um, um, uh, infrastructure. So that CIP budget is gonna be in front of the city council anyway in the next, in June, because we have to adopt the budget. So we'll make sure to highlight that and do a separate um, memo to you to, to identify the cost for that. But irregardless of the cost, we have to replace it.
Absolutely, thank you so much. And um, thank you for the memo that I received twice on the CARES Act. But I take, I got to, I cleaned my desk and I lost a lot of stuff, but anyway.
Okay.
Um, I noticed that uh, on the report, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, that all the funding for the businesses had been, that's, that's gone, right? That's been all used up. But I noticed that there was, in terms of for the renters, there's eighty-one thousand dollars left that's available.
Correct, the rental relief um, still has some, some, um, we still have uh, some amounts that we, we can offer. Um, we have been, we have been uh, offering that to our residents. Um, but not everybody is qualified to receive that because that particular um, program is very strict in the sense that you have to have been adversely affected by coronavirus, COVID nineteen, that you uh, you, you know, you need rental assistance. If, if not, if you don't fall in that category, you, you, you don't qualify. That's the reason why not everybody qualifies, and that's the reason why we still have the pot of money that we can offer. We have been um, offering it to our residents. We have been um, you know, do campaigns and make sure that everybody knows about it. But you have to have been negatively impacted by COVID in order to qualify for that particular program. Very strict, it's a strict, it's a strict um, program that, that has to, has to have, you, you have to, I guess, you have to be negatively impacted by COVID in order for you to qualify.
Well, you, is, well, is there a plan for um, making sure, because I, I'm, one of the things that I hear is, is that we have opportunities for, for folks, but nobody knows about it.
Mm-hmm.
And so um, is there a plan to, because I, I know uh, out of Arizona partnership with our local area South School District, there might be uh, some folks that may fall in that category. Because I don't know, how do you prove or disprove that you weren't adversely? Because to me, if, if it's COVID time and you lose your job, your company shuts down uh, because of COVID or something like that, that, that would mean that you were adversely affected. Or if you received um, unemployment or something, you know. And I'm not quite sure uh, what the, the identity, but is there some type of plan to make sure? Uh, because I did know, it's, it's a good thing that you um, did say side amount for replenishing the food pantry, but is there some type of plan or, or, I guess what I'm asking, is, is there something in place to make sure that the money goes to folks that, especially since we're, we have, it's, it's coming back again. But is there some kind of plan to make sure people are aware? We have a remediation board and I don't know.
We do, we do, we do our best to make sure that the, the word is out as far as um, uh, letting people know that we have this pot of money that's reserved for um, um, COVID relief as far as rental relief is concerned. So how it works is, um, you know, they fill out an application and, you know, they, they'll identify exactly what the need is and why they need it. And so if it doesn't qualify, um, you know, they'll, they'll list out, you know, why they, you know, why they think they're qualified. If it doesn't qualify for under the coronavirus um, uh, criteria, then they are denied. And so.
How could I know though, if I'm average renter, how could I know that this money is available? Or that, that assistance is available to me? How, how can I find out?
Uh, we, we have been advertising that with, with um, you know, our different programs uh, throughout the city. So it's in our website, um, I believe it's, it's, we, we advertise it in, in social media. Um, short of possibly, again, mailing out something to the community, which costs, costs money. We, we do everything that we possibly can to make sure that everybody knows about this.
All right.
We even did it on TV. It was a, it was a, they did a whole broadcast on it.
On channel two?
No, no, I, I, Spectrum or somebody came out and they actually did a whole thing on TV. Some of our neighbors that you know, we were act, they were actually showcased on there that we had this money available.
Right, we, we have it on Spectrum.
I must have missed it, I'm sorry, I, I must have missed the whole.
Oh, no, no, it's okay, you know, you know, this, this is actually a medium for us to make sure we talk about it. Um, it's, it's in um, the Honda billboard, so we, we, we post it on there and it's on our social media. So the word is getting out there. We have been getting a lot of interest and a lot of applications of, you know, unfortunately, you know, the vast majority just don't, simply do, do not qualify for the money. And, you know, you know, if they don't qualify, then, you know, they, they will get rejected, they're, they're, they're not gonna qualify. So we, but we have a lot of, we, we've had a lot of interest in it. So, you know, the, the word is getting out, it's just that it's, they're not qualified.
All right, and uh, just, just one more, I know we have several consultants and uh, they're all, uh, I guess the reason I'm, I'm asking is I asked uh, someone, I probably sent you a text on it about uh, one particular consultant, they said they never heard of them, but they probably should have. But can we get some type of staff support, update on how they're doing? Because since we approved them to be, you know, to do these various things for us, I just uh, I'd, I'd like to know how they're doing or if we can get an update, they're, they're doing this or they're leaving. Or start to say what they said they were going to do? Because I'm not quite sure if some of them are actually doing what they said they were going to do.
So we, we actually have to identify which one you're referring to, because I'm assuming you're referring to Townsend um.
Well, that's one. And then um, the lady, um, I guess she probably has got the one we just approved last time about the, the trash, the organic waste. I can't.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't recall her name, I should have made a note.
HF and H.
Yeah, and then uh, there's one, Denmi, hers by over in the community development uh, to kind of oversee that whole, to get people trained or hired. And I'm not quite sure, it's like what, what is they're doing over there, but I thought I remember someone. De novo, is that them? They help with the housing.
Housing element.
Yeah, and that's, that's done, right? So then the other part was to train um, train staff, I believe, if I remember correctly.
So that's not the De novo. The, are you talking about the building inspector?
I don't. Yeah, it wasn't an inspector, I don't know, it was uh, I know we hired several consultants. It'd be nice if we could just get a list so we can keep track of who all these, these people are, you know. It's, it's a nice idea because you have to pay benefits and all that. It's a, it's a way to get some jobs and everything, start, you know, you know, have specific skills or a skill set with them on staff. But um, I'd like to know how they're doing and at least uh.
So i- i- if I can just clarify, so the, the directive is to first identify the consultants that we currently work with, working with?
Okay, that's a good start.
And then a, a performance ma- matrix of, but you do understand that we have a lot of consultants that we work with? I mean, do we?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't mind reading big reports.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not quite sure how many consultants you, you have on board, but it would be interesting to know uh, how many. Because that, that my point is uh, tell us some things that we might. Because that, that my point is tell us some things that we might want to consider doing in terms of staffing. So if, I don't know how many there are. Is that many? I thought it was maybe only four or five.
No, it's a lot.
We have a lot. I mean, we have anyone from performance audits, we have anyone from financial audits, we have county auditors, we have, I mean, there's.
Are those consultants as well?
Yeah, they are all consultants, correct? Mainly because there has to be a third party unbiased opinion. As you know, we go through audits. We have single audits, we have financial audits, we have county audits. Every single programs that we have in the county, elderly, nutrition, childcare, those are all audited. So if you have a directive that we, we identify each one of them and then provide a performance matrix for each one of them, it's quite voluminous. I mean, this is, there's a lot. Unless, unless we can identify, you can, you can tell me which ones you are referring to. But if it's a blanked one, I mean, that's directed, that's directed.
Because the ones you talked about for the audit, they, that's not an ongoing process. That's a one-shot kind of deal. At audit time, they give this third party, bring them in, they overlook everything and that's done. And we know that they're doing it because we were successful, we successfully passed the audit. So we know those are there. But what about the one over community development? What's the other one?
Well, again, the one from community development.
Bitty ones? No. I mean, like you said, for the audit, for sure. But that's like a one-shot deal, it's over and done. And like I said, we know that, that they're successful because we passed the audit. So I'm not specific, but you know, the big ones, the Cal Fresh Lady, the Townsend Consulting, De novo. Now, I can, I don't mind if, if you want me to be more specific, I can sit down and go back through our agendas and figure out once we're approved and then I give you the exact list of what we're talking about, that'd be all right. But I'd just like to know how they're doing. We're paying, what, seven thousand dollars a month for a lot of these guys, these folks? And I'd just like to know if we're getting our money's worth. That's all.
I mean, absolutely.
I can, I can go back and trace back through them. I can go back. I got four more weeks left on my school year, so I'm gonna have plenty of time this summer so I can sit down and and go back through the agendas and pull the ones I'm specifically referring to. And perhaps by then, they'll have enough, have done enough things that we'll be able to get a good report.
I think that might be a little bit easier for our staff to kind of understand which ones, just so they're a little bit clearer.
Do you have something, do you have something in mind that we can get started with? If you can get a second on the directive, I know we talked a little bit about, you know, the big one is obviously Townsend Consulting because that's, that's, you know, it's a, you know, advocacy group. How are they really doing? Is that something that you would like to see first and then see what?
It's kind of like, wouldn't know what they've been up to. I mean, maybe they haven't had a chance to get started, but or, and the people over the housing element, like how we're doing on that. I just probably, I think what piqued my curiosity is that I was reading a newspaper, a Sunday's paper about other cities that have failed their housing element because they had identified sites that weren't even buildable. You know, you know, building things on a landslide area and all that. And so I'd like to know, since they kind of ushered us all through.
So for, for the housing element, I know for a fact that, I mean, the housing element has been submitted to HCD. State and they, the state has requested the number of different revisions and they haven't approved them. So in that essence, I can tell you that the housing element has been completed, but it's not yet been approved. So if, I mean, if, if the performance matrix is that, you know, are they done? Yes, technically they're done, but we're waiting for the state to give us clarification as far as exactly what they want from.
I'll come back to you on it. I'll circle back.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate what the comments that you made so far. You gave me a lot of food for God. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other directives at this time? No? Okay. Let's move on to item number 20, City Manager's remarks regarding our previous directors.
Mayor, so the members of the city council, we briefly touched on the directive on the COVID-19 policies. Again, this is a policy that we have developed through the past two years, which includes prevention program, protocols for exposure, cleaning and disinfecting, et cetera, et cetera. It's a quite voluminous report. It's very thick. So we've submitted that to city council for your review. We do have a couple of videos that we would like to share. Becky, if you could play the videos?
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Oh, or we have a second video, Madam.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
While we're waiting for that video, that next video is actually for our budget forum, which is going to be on June 1st at 6:00 PM. By that time, we would have seen that the budget, first and foremost, in our finance committee meeting, and then the first reading of the budget. And the forum is actually really for our community to come out and ask questions and get informed as far as, you know, what our budget is and how it is and how we formulate it. So here's a quick video. Again, it's, you know, we do want to make sure that the community knows and we highly encourage everybody to come out and participate in the budget process because that's, you know, first and foremost, you're right as a community member to get informed and ask questions. And that's going to be on June 1st at 6:00 PM. And I do have a follow-up to Councilmember Francis's question on the reader boards at Masukai and Raleigh Park. They are fifty-five thousand dollars each to replace those. Those have been incorporated into our CIP budget. I just got a message from our Public Works Director, Alan Rig. Thank you, Alan, for that. I know you're on vacation. But he is in the background, listening in. So thank you for that information. Madam Mayor, that ends my council remarks and directives.
Okay. Well, first off, I'd like to thank Public Works Director Alan Rig for being on vacation and listening in. That's a dedicated employee, boy, I tell you. And also our different, I guess we have a video department now, which I didn't realize, because every, every meeting, our videos are getting better and better. And Mr. City Manager, thank you again for doing the budget forum. I know we've had it in the past and I think it's, it's great and it's unique in the fact that our city, we're so transparent and, you know, sharing with the community how money is spent in the city of Gardena, especially when you see so much nonsense on social media, people trying to say that we mismanage funds here in the city of Gardena. I can't think of really any other city that puts on anything like this. And like I said, it's so transparent. So thank you again for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to add that, again, we're going to be discussing this with you and Councilmember Cascane in the finance committee meeting on Thursday. And then again, on during the regular council meeting on the first reading of the budget and then set aside a forum for the community to come out and really drill down and ask us questions as far as, hey, where is this coming from and how are you spending this? And then I believe we're going to have a rec, Rec and Human Services Recreation Department, again, is putting this special program for us on June 1st. And rest assured, you know, it's going to be a great event. You know, we're going to have some refreshments and a little bit of food. So, you know, I'd like, you know, folks to come out and participate with us. And again, thank you, Madam Mayor, for your kind words. We do have the financial transparency portal in our website. And so whatever we add into the budget, whatever we talk about in the budget, whatever we formulate in the budget, it's going to be in the website and you'll see that. At any time you want, just go log into our website, go to the financial portal, the transparency portal, you'll be able to see exactly the city's budget and how we spend our funds. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up is council remarks. We're going to begin tonight with Councilwoman Francis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we last met, I attended the mariachi in Maraca's celebration and celebrate, since celebrating Cinco de Mayo. It's a very fun event. And I'd like to thank Chief Savell and Tracy in ADAF for helping to coordinate the Take Back Prescription Drug event as well on the same day. And it was, it was a great success. I did get to meet the DEA agents that were there. I was really surprised to see them. It's all this. So it was, it was a great event and it was very successful. And I look forward to the, another Take Back Prescription Drug Day in October. And the mariachi in Maracas, they had the salsa showdowns. Glad to taste some great salsa. And it was, it was a nice event. You really enjoyed it. May is a busy month. We, of course, had a Mother's Day on Sunday, so I hope everybody had a wonderful Mother's Day and enjoyed themselves and got an opportunity to celebrate not only mothers, but women for all the things that they do. And today, May 10th, just happens to be Mother's Day in Mexico. So para las madres, feliz dia de las madres. For, let me see if I get it right. Para todas las madres y nuestra seguridad. Okay, en el mundo y en México también. Okay, I think I got it right. You guys rest me if I'm wrong. Did I do okay, Attorney Vasquez?
You did, you did very well, Councilwoman Francis.
Thank you. And also, May is also Asian American Pacific holiday month as well. And it's a good opportunity to celebrate the contribution and history of Asian Americans in our, our country. We don't have to look very far for folks to celebrate a Ken Nakoka, you know, Ronis Nakka, May Doy, a city clerk, our first city clerk, Asian, Japanese American city clerk. And also, I'd like to mention Mr. Congressman Norman Neta, who happened, just recently passed on May 3rd. But he founded the Congressional Asian Pacific American Caucus, Congressional Caucus in Washington DC. And, like I said, he just passed. And he was also our first Asian American Transportation Secretary. So we appreciate that. So, and just, not to be a downer, but, you know, Asian hate is, it hasn't really gone away and discrimination has gone away. So we need to make sure that there's equity for everyone. And that's one of the great ideas of our country. Everyone's treated fairly, has equal opportunity, equitable opportunity. So let's keep that in mind. And I think that's going to conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mayor Protiom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. The mariachas event was really a great event, especially because we didn't have our Cinco de Mayo parade. I'm kind of hoping if we do this next year, that we can do our parade from Gardena Boulevard and instead of Masukai Park, end up back at our, our city complex and, and continue what we had this year. I think it was a really great event. Stephanie and her staff did a great job with all that they did. So thank you, Steph. Your staff was awesome. And I think this was a great event that could make it bigger than it's always been from before. I was fortunate enough to attend a memorial in Sacramento. Toshio was a really great friend of mine. As the mayor said, he was kind of our 007. And it was a great time to be with his mom and dad, with Kristen and his son, T'Kale. Just to memorialize a man that loved this city, worked for our city, was a great policeman and a mentor that went way too soon in his life. I attended this homeless task force with the COG. I went to the ministerial association lunch. Thank you for all the ministers and pastors that showed up. That was a really great event because we hadn't had it for a while. So it was great to see everybody there celebrating and interacting. I attended a, an event in Downey that was presented by the Downey Kiwanis Club. And I'm going to tell you, as a past distinguished Lieutenant Governor of Kiwanis, it was refreshing to see. see all the students that received scholarships that night from the Downey Kiwanis Club. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars. The kids, as Kiwanis do, is, they're our future. We try to teach them how to be leaders, and I was totally impressed with what Downey's schools have done with Key Winds, Key Club, and all the, how they teach kids to just be leaders. And I think the scholarships were really, really appreciated by those students, so Downey Kiwanis should be praised for what they did that night. Attended the G-Trans Bus Rodeo. I guess I wasn't good enough in the bus because I didn't come in first, but I'm going to tell you, I have a great appreciation driving a bus now. Thank you, Ernie, and all your staff, because that was really, really a great day. It was all about getting together as family in our city and all the things that we do, and I think the employees all appreciated that day. I was fortunate enough to be invited to the South County Labor Breakfast. It's really, it's really important to see what labor does for us and how unions are so good to how our country runs, but it was a great event. Armando, who received the award, I reckoned him as being the one in the Bible about, when I was hungry, you fed me; when I was naked, you clothed me; when I was thirsty, you gave me drink. This man epitomized what God has put on people who have served him. This guy took time away from his family to be with those less fortunate and took care of them, and I was really impressed. And I was fortunate enough to sit with Maxine Waters and Mike Fier at the breakfast. It was a great day, so I'm thankful for that. I attended the COGS Steering Committee. I attended the COGS Board Meeting, and the city, I have to say happy birthday to our city manager and also to Ernie Crespo, our Transportation Director. They were kind of like a few days apart, and thank you for all you do and for how you sacrifice yourself for our city and all the things that you do away from your family. So, Madam Mayor, I believe that's it, but I'm just totally appreciative of all our city employees and what they do, so that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Cascanian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our last meeting, I attended the bus rodeo this past Saturday. It was a great event. We rode the bus, and now I'm considering to get my Class A license. I might become a bus driver. That's just a secondary job, maybe, so. It was a great event, Crespo and team, you guys did a great job. Thank you very much, and congratulations to all the winners. And I attended as well the Mariachi and Maracas event as well. I was there with my colleague, Mayor Protem Tanaka, and everybody was there. I saw Mark, Councilwoman Francis, Madam Mayor. So it was a great event, thank you very much. Everybody was, whoever anticipated, it was a great event, as usual. We always do the best of the best. Everybody jealous of us, so I have to say that, too. And I also, Madam Mayor, I would like to congratulate, not only in Mexico, it's in Central America and Latin America in general, Mother's Day, so I just want to wish, quiero desear a todos los madres un feliz día de la madre. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney?
Muy bien.
Gracias, muchas gracias.
I have a lot of bilingual council members, I see.
Yes, I just want to wish all the mothers, our neighboring country and Central America, Happy Mother's Day, and the mothers can't be replaced. You can't have only one mother, and mother can't be replaced, and my kudos to all the mothers. Madam Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, you wanted to add somebody's name to the condolences?
Yes, Madam Mayor, because it is Asian Pacific Islander Month. Norman Mineta, as Councilmember Francis said, this guy was a kind of a leader amongst the Asians. He was one of those guys that was out there. I believe he started with the Clinton Administration, but he was one of those guys that actually pressed us Asians to get involved, to make a difference, and I believe that tonight we should, at the end, just honor him with that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I'll add that, too. Okay. And for myself, since the last council meeting, I had the opportunity to attend a couple of events here. The first one was the Gardena on the Go, which was the Circus de Soleil. That was a fun event to attend and got a chance to ride the G-Trans bus there with some of our residents. Everybody had a great time, and I just want to thank our, I think, I don't know if I was Parks and Rec or Senior Bureau Department, just for putting that whole event together. Our seniors really, really enjoyed it. They're looking forward to more events like that, so thank you, guys, for doing such a great job, especially even picking that type of entertainment for them to see as well. I also attended the Mariachis and Maracas event, another great event. We had people asking, are we going to do this again next year? So, you know, it's always good when people come back and they start thinking about next year, so thank you for that. It was fun having the salsa showdown contest. I think all those fun cooking events like that, whether it's the chili cook-off, the salsa contest, it's kind of that fun, I don't want to say small-city kind of type of thing that people really get into, they really enjoy it, and it gives everybody an opportunity just, hey, to just participate and do their part, so a lot of fun. Everybody had a great time with that and really, really great entertainment.
Won the salsa contest.
Oh, yeah. Anthony Dixon won the salsa contest, and I'm sure he will never let us forget it, but it was really good salsa. And, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought here, the dancers and so on, it was all really, really good. The whole thing put together was good. Again, I can't thank our Parks and Rec Department. They're like the best party planners ever when it comes to putting an event together because they're so creative with all the different ideas that they come up with. It was also mentioned earlier about the trip to Sacramento where we honored the life of Toshio Hari. I, too, attended. There were two events that we attended. One was the candlelight vigil, and the other was the actual memorial ceremony, which was the 44th Annual California Peace Officer Ceremony, a really, really moving event. And, you know, it was, I don't know the best way to describe it, but it was, it was really nice to see so many officers who were there to honor the life of Toshio. I can't thank our honor guard enough. Officer Sean Dixon, Officer Gonzalez, and Dee, I can't think of Dee's last name at the moment, there are honor guards that were there. They stood for so many hours representing Gardena, representing Toshio, and I commend them for that. The night before, they stood by the monument that was unveiled and the day of the event, so, I'm sorry, Dee Seerly. And again, I appreciate everybody for just going that extra edge. I mean, a lot of them were working the day before and they had to work afterwards. They drove down there, they flew down there. Again, I appreciate them being there to be with the family, to be with Toshio's wife and his son, and I just want to thank you, guys, for letting me be a part of that, Councilmember Mayor Protem Tanaka. We really appreciate being able just to share in those special moments as we honored the life of Toshio Hari and was able to have his name on the wall in Sacramento, so thank you, guys. And I'll probably be sending a letter over to our PD just to thank all of the people who made that happen. Captain Assorio, Lieutenant Mike Sargent, they were all very instrumental in making that happen and even getting Toshio Hari's name on the wall because it wasn't an easy task at all, so once again, thank you. Also, I attended my sanitation director's meeting. This is something that doesn't happen too often, it's kind of like the director's orientation meeting. I attended that. On the same day, I attended a district LAUSD Superintendent 100 Days of Planning to let the elected officials know in all of our cities that are represented by LAUSD what the plan is as far as moving forward for our, for our schools here. So I was happy that the superintendent was present via Zoom, and it was a very good informative meeting. I wish I could offer more information to tell you as it relates to that, but they're going to be sending us more definite information. They were just kind of giving us an overview of what the plan potentially will be, but I don't have definite information in front of me right now. And I've just got a message here, I forgot to mention one of the names. Lieutenant Brock was also with us at the ceremony in Sacramento, so I also, I just want to thank all the lieutenants and captains, all the officers who were there. They all did a great job. I apologize if I forgot to mention your name directly. I, too, also attended the G-Trans picnic. I want to thank Ernie Crespo for doing a great job. I also want to thank the different directors who participated in the dunk tank, Stephanie Santin, Ernie Crespo, Coy, I think Ray participated in it as well. Each one of them had a cause that they were, you pay so much money to try to dunk them, and each one of it went to a different thing, whether it was sickle cell, the Elks. Thank you, guys, for doing that. That was, it was a very interesting event to be able to dunk all the different directors. I know they all made a lot of money. In fact, I think everybody probably got the most joy out of dunking Ernie Crespo, our Transportation Director. In fact, I got a chance to do it as well. In fact, his kids loved it, they couldn't stop dunking him the entire time. So thank you, guys, for that. And for those of you who are wondering who won the bus rodeo, I did, believe it or not. I'm surprised. I actually thought it was going to be Councilmember Cascanian because I didn't think he had hit anything, but there was one time where I saw him dragging a cone the whole entire obstacle course, but, yeah, believe it or not, my team won. So again, we have a whole new respect for our drivers out there for doing what they do, not only driving that bus, but like you just mentioned earlier, just dealing with the day-to-day of customers and traffic and all of that. So thank you, guys, very much for what you do. You, guys, are really awesome. And lastly, I attended the, and I hope I say this right, Bonsai? Bonsai? Bullseye? Is that right, Councilmember or Mayor Protem? Bullseye Exhibit that we had on last Saturday and Sunday, really, really nice, beautiful, beautiful plaques there. And so, again, I'm glad we're opening back up so we can have those kind of exhibits for our community to come out and see. And with that, that ends my report, and next up is Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, excellent report by all. I want to say, I know in this country, we always say, you know, we want to support our first responders. I think we should also add transportation operators to that slogan. The bus rodeo really was an eye-opener, so I want to thank all the staff in regards to that that put that on. You don't know about another person until you walk in their shoes, and I learned a lot that day, and that was a real awesome event. Luckily, the cones weren't breathing, otherwise it'd be, I'd be definitely put under the jail for what I did with that bus. But those buses are great, they handle real well. It's amazing, something that heavy, that big, actually maneuvers like it does, so that was really impressive. Since our last meeting, I attended and represented our city and our region at our Southern California Area Governments Meeting out in Palm Desert or wherever it was, Palm Springs. We're one of 198 cities over six counties, a meeting in this meeting room. It was an awesome event to be with so many leaders from all these other cities and other counties. The highlight and the most prideful thing of that is like, man, Gardena, you guys are doing so well, you're doing this, you're doing that, you know, how are you, guys, doing it? I said, I don't know, we just do. So I just want to just, you know, thank my colleagues and city staff and our community for just putting that faith in us, you know, we put our show into the grindstone, and we just keep, we keep grinding. I had the opportunity to participate in a discussion in regards to digital equity again and what cities can do to make sure they're doing their part with partnering with various agencies, public-private partnerships, working with our K-12 colleagues to make sure that there is digital equity for all. I also participated in a regional discussion in regards to the vision for the future. I think the SCAG Conference was pretty positive. The bellyaching about the Rena numbers lasted for about 15, 20 minutes, and then we all kind of just got past it and got on to the business of what our region should look like by 2050 and everything. And Madam Mayor, because the hour is short, I want to make sure everybody has some evening, so I will end my report there. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. There was one more announcement we want to make. We are going to have another Coffee with a Cop on May 24th. This here will be the Gardena Police Department in the West Parking Lot of the Police Department. For those of you who don't know, it's 1718 West 162nd Street, and it will be from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And just a quick note, it's no agendas or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know the officers in your neighborhood, so. With that, we're going to move on to our remembrances. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Mr. Johnny Brazel, longtime Gardena resident since 1979. We're also going to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Mildred Williams, a longtime resident of Gardena, active member of the Second Time Around Club, and Senior Citizens Commissioner for the City of Gardena from 2007 to 2015. We're also going to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Nancy Kim, owner of the Gardena Cinema. She passed away last Sunday from battling endometrial cancer. The Kim family has owned the Gardena Cinema since 1976, and Nancy will be deeply missed by the Gardena community. And lastly, we're going to adjourn in memory of Mr. Norman Mineta, who was a leader and represented the Asian-American community and helping, encouraging all to make a difference. Okay, with that being said, the Gardena City Council will adjourn to the closed session portion of the city council meeting at 7:00 PM, followed by the regular city council meeting at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. We are adjourned. All right, guys, 9 o'clock, this is the earliest we've ever been.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you for nobody jinxing it early. See you, guys.
Good night.
All right, good night.
Night.